Is citizen comments. After citizen comments that I will try to catch everybody up, both for us, but importantly, for other people who might be joining us today. Our citizen comment period is going to be a little different. We asked citizens that wanted to comment to email us by noon today. And I feel good about the fact that that word got out because we have 12 citizen comments that we will hear. And so our director of our public information officer and director of communications, Lacy Nobles, is going to read those for us. And she will read them one at a time. And when she finishes the first one, she will then go to the next one and let us know who is commenting. We will. I need people to be muted, please. I can hear background.
Sorry. That's probably me. I don't know sure where to mute it.
Touch the touch the touch the top left of the screen. And there should be.
I got it.
Touch, touch the top of the screen and over to the right where it says the microphone is. Got it? Thank you. Okay, Ms. Nobles, would you please begin?
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not showing up.
I can see you, Ms. Joy. I can see you. Okay, Ms. Joy, before we go to public comments, if, if you will touch the top of your screen and there's a, up there, you'll see a stop video or in your case, start video. If you click, click the start video, which should bring you into our.
I don't have start video. I have record, live, and on YouTube.
Yeah, you're, you're, okay, if you'll click, will you touch the screen up there by, by that, please?
I did. That's what it says.
When you, when you touch the screen up by that live in the red box, it won't, it doesn't give you options right above it?
Copy streaming link is what it says.
Okay, I believe Ms. Joy has been added in a different way than the rest of the council. So we will take a very brief recess until we can get Ms. Joy in our meeting with video.
It's audio, it's still on. Can you bring our video in?
I.
Can you turn her?
I just.
Oh, her. She came on for a minute.
It's showing now 12 panelists. It shows me as one, but it, uh, it flashes green. I don't know what that means. Now it's.
Okay, Ms. Joy, I can see you. Lacy, are you on audio? Steve, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Juan.
Okay, thank you. Just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Juan, can you hear me?
Yes. Y'all are all good. We had, we had Latrell on and then she dropped off, so.
Okay, can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, we can hear you.
Yes. Latrell, I can see and hear you.
Okay. Lacy, are you, can you hear me? Because we can't hear you. Okay, there we go. All right, Mayor, you're on.
Okay, good afternoon. The Lubbock, it's 2:16. The Lubbock City Council has returned from a brief recess. I believe Ms. Patterson Harris may have left us momentarily, but let's see if we can't get her back. Kill just a little time while Ms. Nobles starts with our first citizen comments. Comment, Ms. Nobles?
I'm here.
You start by reading their name and address as, as in our normal fashion. By the way, Ms. Garza will be keeping time and these comments cannot exceed three minutes as, as council, by council rules. Thank you, Ms. Nobles.
And since these were emailed in, we don't actually have physical home addresses. Some might have them, but most of them don't. But I do have names. Okay, this is from Benny and Paula Jackson. Our names are Benny and Paula Jackson. We own a small business, Stems by Benny Jackson. We are speaking out for all non-essential small businesses. We feel small businesses are the lifeblood of Lubbock, and during this shutdown, we are all bleeding out profusely. We, as small businesses, need someone to listen to our situation and be an advocate for immediate change. Here is what we would like for you to address and more importantly, solve. The ban on all businesses has allowed many large, big box type stores to be labeled essential, thus allowing them to be open to sell all their products. We do not have a problem with them selling their products, but the problem is they are allowed to sell non-essential items, which in many cases are the same type of products we small businesses carry. Simply put, this is not fair. The essential stores are being able to profit during this time, but we, non-essentials, are struggling in an extremely huge way right now. We feel like in order to have an even playing field, if we, non-essential businesses cannot have our doors open to sell the products that we carry, then the essential businesses should be directed to rope off sections of non-essential products in their stores. This would be similar to the blue laws. We understand plumbing supplies would be essential if, for instance, someone had emergency plumbing issues and needed supplies to repair it. What is not understood is why people go into Market Street, Costco, Walmart, Sam's, Target, Home Depot, Lowe's, et cetera, et cetera, and purchase patio furniture, grills, lighting, plants, gifts, pillows, home decor, cards and stationery, and the list goes on and on. These aisles need to be closed. These types of items have all been deemed non-essential for a small business that has to be closed, and yet they can be purchased inside the heading of essential businesses. This is absolutely not fair that we, small businesses, are going broke while business, big businesses cannot only continue as normal, but can profit during times like this on things that have been labeled non-essential. The playing field must be leveled. It appears that this is being spoken out of two sides of the mouth. To limit all non-essential items to curbside delivery or shipping would keep everyone in their homes because there would be nothing to do. Yes, people are getting out because of boredom and roaming these big box places, shopping because they have been allowed to do so for fun, non-essential items. If the regulations would change, it would keep a lot of people in if they realized they couldn't go out and buy plants and pillows for the patios right now, for example. If all businesses can't be closed down for a short interval of time or their aisles can't be roped off for non-essential items to be sold, then we, small businesses, should be allowed to open their doors. Thank you for giving our concerns serious consideration and for doing what is right in this awful global situation. Paula and Benny Jackson.
Ms. Nobles, thank you for sharing the Jackson's feedback. Would you please move to the next citizen comment?
Yes. This is from Robin Densford. Thank you for getting numbers out to Lubbock regarding COVID-19. Please consider a similar ordinance to Laredo, Texas, recently adopted, requiring all citizens to wear face masks when in public or be subjected to a $1,000 fine for violations. While these masks don't prevent people from getting infected when exposed, they do reduce the amount of virus in the air when infected people cough or sneeze. Thank you, Robin.
Thank you very much, Ms. Nobles. Let's move to the third citizen comment.
Okay, this is from Paula Jackson. Hello, I would like to, the council to address my concern as a small business owner. We are trying to understand how to save for thousands of people to go into big stores and purchase candles, cards, flowers, and other non-essentials, but is not safe for 20, 10 to 20 a day to come into our store. Please help us understand and rethink your decision to level the playing field for the little guys and help flatten the curve at the same time. Thank you, Paula Jackson.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Jackson, for your comments. Let's move to the fourth citizen comment, Ms. Nobles.
Okay, and this is from Anna Nelson. I would like the mayor to address why liquor and alcohol stores have been deemed essential and are allowed to remain open. However, optometrists and eyeglass places are closed. My son's glasses need to be replaced. They keep falling off his face and his prescription needs to be renewed. I had an appointment to get a new prescription along with new frames and lenses until the businesses were closed due to the COVID-19 pandemic because they were non-essential. If I wanted to, I would be able to go to the liquor store and get a 40 or gallon of liquor without issue.
Thank you for sharing Ms. Nelson's comments. We move to the fifth comment, please.
This is from Jennifer Nage. To our mayor and the city council boards, first, thank you all for the efforts to keep Lubbock as safe yet as economically functional as possible in these difficult times. It is no easy task. I understand there is a huge array of community responses given each decision you all make. With the growing number of furloughed and unemployed workers at this time, finding ways to repurpose those workers until they can return to their jobs is crucial for economic stability. Are there currently plans for any of the local plants, farms, factories to start manufacturing essential healthcare goods, either for local use or nationwide distribution? Second, related to the economic stability of our area, is there any pressure in LPNL to lower their rates to match the co-op during this? Thank you kindly for all your time and consideration in these matters. Jennifer Nage.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Nage. Thank you for your comment. Will you move to our sixth comment, please, Ms. Nobles?
This is anonymous. My daughter went to Target yesterday to do a pickup, and while she was sitting in the parking lot waiting, she saw.
Excuse me, excuse me, Ms. Nobles, excuse me for a minute. Mr., I'd like to call Mr. Weaver in for a moment. Is it, is it appropriate to hear anonymous citizen comment? I don't think normally we do hear anonymous comments. We usually require the name of the citizen. Ms. Nobles, please, please provide that via email to the city council, but I don't believe it's appropriate that we have that in citizen comments. Move, move to your next one, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
This is from Jim Backsa. I have two comments. One, we need to stop panicking about the virus and get back to work. Please set policies to encourage people to go back to work. The existing policies are crushing our economy and violating our right to assemble. Two, given the dramatic decrease in tax revenue expected, the council needs to slash the budget now. We need entire departments eliminated in order to survive this panic.
Okay, thank you for, thanks for sharing Mr. Box, Box's comments. Let's go now to our, I'm sorry, to our eighth, let's go to our eighth citizen comment, please.
This is from Vanessa Mendoza. Can you please reiterate the importance of what the protocol is for anyone over the age of 60 and just how quickly the virus is spreading? Thank you all for your hard work and time and everything you are doing.
Thank you, Ms. Nobles. Okay, let's move to our, I believe it'd be our ninth comment. We got Ms., we heard Ms. Mendoza's comment. I want to make sure we recognize that. Please continue.
Okay, this is from Caitlin Puga. Why is Amarillo in a shelter-in-place with less cases and deaths while everyone in Lubbock is still allowed to roam around free with no consequences just because they don't want to be at home anymore?
What was the name of that citizen?
Caitlin Puga. P U G A.
That was more of a citizen question versus a comment, I think, but duly noted. Okay, let's go to the, uh, next comment, please, and this is our 10th one.
Okay, this is from Brett Harris. I've seen many kids still play out in the streets and hear a group of friends dropping each other off every night. I'm very concerned on how this will help spread the COVID-19 virus and make the situation worse than it already is. Well, what will be done to make sure that they stay, the stay-at-home order will be enforced?
Okay, thank you, Ms., thank you, Ms. Noble. And we'll go to the 11th comment, please.
This is from Lee Doomer. What do you recommend for parents who share custody of children? Should children remain with the parent they're currently with until the shelter-in-place restrictions change, or should they change homes as scheduled?
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Doomer, Mr. Doomer, Ms. Doomer, I believe. Okay, and then to our, I think this will be our final, final comment, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, this is from Amanda Miller. City buses are being overused by people who are joyriding and social distancing within the bus is being hindered since announcing that the buses are free. Some of the older drivers are voicing concerns within the community and are becoming nervous.
Okay, is that, does that conclude the citizen comments?
That concludes the comments.
Okay, I'd like to just take a minute and.
Mr. Mayor? Do we not have addresses on these citizens?
We do not. They, they came in by email, so we don't have. I'm going to ask staff to respond back and try to get addresses so we'll know which district they're in. I also would ask staff to direct these, a number of these emails are comments, they're not question, excuse me, they're questions, they're not comments. They're very similar. In fact, some of these are, I think, exact emails that I've seen earlier this week. Regardless of that case, let's make sure staff that, that we get these to the, the appropriate person to respond. I think even though it's not, it's not our job to respond to them directly today, although our discussion will touch on a number of these points, I would imagine, let's make sure we are answering any questions. Okay?
Well, and Mr. Mayor, as to number 11, the governor has spoken to that issue.
Yeah, Ms. Joy, Ms. Joy, let's, let's try, I mean, if we start answering these questions, we're going to answer, we got, we got, we got through the whole list. And I mean, we don't, we don't have the time to do that. It's not, we've got people that's, all they've done for three weeks is answer questions and they'll continue to do that. And people, you're right, many, nearly all these questions are answered if people would take the time to read. We'll move now to item 111 in work session. I'm going to turn this over to, to Mr. Atkinson in a moment, but I want to, just for people that are watching, joining us today or listening in, and as a reminder to council and staff, we, we last met as a group on Tuesday, the 24th of March in our regular meeting. At that meeting, we ratified and approved the fifth emergency declaration that I had put in place. On March 29th, I put in place or issued the sixth of those declarations. That was our stay-at-home order. On Tuesday, the 31st, this Tuesday, Tuesday of this week, shortly after lunch, we posted for this meeting, including, the posting you see, including an executive session. Just later that afternoon, the governor issued his executive order number 14. He did not call it a stay in place or stay at home or shelter in place. In fact, he sort of maneuvered around it during the press conference and the questions thereafter. Subsequently, however, both in video that he sent out on social media as well as media interviews, he has, in fact, called his order a stay in place. His order, as many of you are aware, are aware, is in effect through April 30th, but not on April 30th. Like our order, he calls out the essential businesses and references the document issued by Homeland Security, the feds. Just a few minutes ago, I signed a seventh emergency declaration that recognizes the governor's date of April 30th and makes one small change to our ability, our health department's ability to set occupancy numbers. The only other, the only other change is that it updates both our confirmed cases and coronavirus deaths. The item we have on our regular agenda today is to consider a resolution continuing and affirming that declaration that I just detailed. Before we open the floor to discussion, I'm going to ask the city manager to give us a bit of background, Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Is everyone able to, to hear me clearly? Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll go ahead and start. Kind of divided up the presentation today. Effort to catch everybody up at the same time on, on where we are. First, and I'll say this again when we end, would encourage everybody, everybody that's watching, anybody else, if you'll go to mylubbock.us/COVID19, many of the documents, much of the data that has been referenced so far and that will continue to be referenced today are posted there in kind of a dashboard fashion. This is what we're using for our daily updates to the press. It's what we're using as we go through press conferences and so forth. We do have the governor's executive order that was mentioned as posted, executive order 14. We have the federal updated guidance that speaks to essential business, as well as your local declarations are all there. So first part of my discussion, going to focus on response. And of course, the city's response is directed by the Office of Emergency Management. And our primary effort right now is to help public health and the public health authority, local healthcare providers, healthcare institutions, as we work through the pandemic response plan. Doing that builds a pretty large support base behind them, and I'm going to list a number of those departments. There are more, but we'll start with your Lubbock Fire Rescue, Fire Marshal's Office, Lubbock Police Department, the various public information officers, and that's a multi-agency operation that is running, what we call the IMT or the Incident Management. We're fortunate to have two of those. MTs are a group of specialists that come from multiple disciplines. The IMT that we're drawing on the most right now are just specialists, they're helping with resources. Botcut is just a bit of a surprise, but our effort is being supported by employees from the Lubbock Civic Center, certainly from our information technology department, city manager's office, as well as a representative or the actual Lubbock County Emergency Management Coordinator. That is your primary staffing that's at your emergency operations center and has been now for several weeks. Before I get into the details of that, want to stop for a moment, and I really want to call out and thank our city and public employees from across the deal, across the community for what they're doing. I've already mentioned that you have the civic center involved. We also have your Lubbock Independent School District nurses. We have two of those folks that have volunteered to help us public health. We've huge grouped together. Again, they're supporting public health department, public health, the healthcare providers, but we're also supporting the community. So really want to say thank you to the various businesses that are really innovating and are leading by example as we get into this. And I'm going to give you some more specific pieces of that. Over the course of the last two weeks, we've seen all front ways that businesses are protecting their customers, protecting their employees to the extent they can, continuing to operate their business. A few of those examples, we've seen numerous ways to do touchless delivery. The latest one that was reported to me today is some of our drive-ups are no longer handing food. The latest one that was reported to me today is some of our drive-ups are no longer handing food out as you come in. They instead place the food, the sacks on a tray, push the tray out, you pull the sack off. There is no human interchange. We do that. We've seen stores have either requested or in some cases mandated one member inside the store at a time. And families to limit the number of folks that come in at one time. We've seen businesses put voluntary occupancy limits on themselves. We've all seen the articles in the local media about masks, face shields, other items locally. All of these taken together and others that we've observed is real built to retail guidance that is also posted on website, But some version, the creativity and the innovation of our community, that's what's going to keep us safe and that's what's going to help us win. So moving to kind of the next step as it relates to what's going on at your EOC. It is staff seven days a week. Staffing is by the departments mentioned here. Moods, now a public health call center that also operates seven days a week. Public Health Department is also on seven days a week. We'll continue. The three focus areas, we have numerous subgroups, but the focus area is number one, support the public health response. Number two, provide the resource and logistics support and management. That is not simply an effort for the city of Lubbock and Lubbock's first responders. That is citywide. We are the clearinghouse both for needs and when we can to fill those needs. What is the primary need in Lubbock? It's not a secret and it's the same if we go across the state or the country. It's PPE or personal protective equipment. Counsel, I'm pleased to report that earlier this week, we received about an eight pallet delivery. Those are supplies that are released by the federal government through what is called the Strategic National Stockpile or the SNS. As we walked into this meeting, I was given a notice that we have received four more pallets. That is tremendous. That is helpful. It's not enough. We have to continue to keep the chain going. We are not aware at this moment of any facility that is in a critical need. They're not out of a particular supply. Some have a few days, some have multiple days, but we've really spent a tremendous amount of time and effort on that. The third focus, number three, it's to maintain the overall situational awareness. It's the continuity of operations that focuses specifically on the city. And we're also charged with compliance and that compliance is with your government or your governors as well as your local orders. And I'll talk some more about that here in just a moment. We fielded today, actually as we closed the business yesterday, we have fielded over 2,000 calls at the public health call center that's running at your EOC. That's good. What else is good is those call volumes are beginning to drop. For the last few days, we've averaged about 100 calls a day. Our spike when this first began was just under 400 calls a day, so it has stepped down. We will continue to operate that seven days a week. Might also not come as a surprise, a large part of what we're doing out there is working on rumor control. Things that come in and out through social media. That's done by your PIO team. They're doing a phenomenal job, but I would certainly encourage anybody that's watching or listening, please get your information from official sources. If that comes out from the city, it comes out from your local media. If it comes out from your hospitals, your first response agencies, you can count on that. You can rely on it. If it doesn't, or you can't figure out where it came from, it's likely not going to be correct. Significant part of the effort is to provide public information and updates. Again, the website, mylubbock.us/COVID19. It's all there. It updates each and every day. We are in a declared disaster, both at the state and the federal level. That does cause our response efforts to be eligible for future reimbursement from FEMA. So you have a finance team that is working on that. We are calculating expenses. We're booking expenses. We'll continue to do that. Let me talk a little bit about compliance. Our average is right now is a little more than 60 checks a day that are being run through your Fire Marshal's Office. It varies quite a bit by day, but your Lubbock Police Department is doing checks in addition to that. We are still largely finding when we're sent to a complaint or we do a proactive patrol, we largely are finding that people are in compliance and if they're not, they correct it on site. Not all have chosen to do so, so there have been citations that were issued. Of course, we also have the Environmental Health Department. They have not abated any of their efforts. They're continuing to work with our local food providers to ensure that our food supply is safe. If you have a question, if you have a concern as it relates to compliance, please call 775-2865. That is the non-emergency number at the Lubbock Police Department. It is part of the dispatch system. Those calls are logged. Those calls are dispatched. We have a full accountability system for us. Do us a favor. If it's not truly an emergency, do not call 911. You're welcome to send us an email at any time, but you will get faster response by calling 775-2865. Moving on, I'm going to talk more now about public health. This is a very small list of what's going on over there, and this is current as of yesterday evening. Of course, there are weekly provider calls. I say weekly, they're twice weekly provider calls that are done with all our institutional facilities. These are our nursing homes, our long-term care facilities such as that. Staff at your public health department also investigates each and every positive case that comes in. That's first a contact investigation. Who were you close to? Where were you? Where do we have a risk or another exposure? As we've seen what's going on with the nursing home situation, we do a tremendous number of facility investigation. That's a physical effort at each of those. As of yesterday, we had 161 close contacts that were under monitoring by the public health department. That's in addition to the active number of the positive cases. In Lubbock today, you do have four nursing facilities that have fallen under complete quarantine orders. These orders are monitored by the public health department. They're monitored by the state Health Services Department as well as the Health and Human Services Commission, and they are enforced by the Lubbock Police Department. We have nine officers that are detailed to just those four facilities on the outside. The remaining licensed nursing facilities in Lubbock are not under quarantine. Rather, the providers are under what we call a limited public health order. And that is really just to ensure that those that work in a facility that has not had an issue, don't then go and work in one that might. There's a second limited order that is on those facilities that really is an order of your public health authority, Dr. Ron Cook. And what that order does is detail in specifics who, what, and how for the use of personal protective equipment. Public health staff, of course, we've already mentioned it, they're supported by nurses from the Lubbock Independent School District. We have dedicated staff from your financial planning and analysis team is over there. They maintain the database. They assist us with the analysis and the reporting. We've also provided staff from the Community Development Department and also from the Lubbock Police Department. Some of these investigations move a little bit past what is typically done with a public health investigator, so they've been supplemented by investigators from the Lubbock Police Department. Public Health conducts a daily briefing that consists of Public Health, Public Health Authority, city management, the mayor, and generally one designated council member. We do those to close the business each day. Those are sequenced such that we have whatever the daily test results will be. We can go over those if that results in needing to do a press conference, any particular announcements, excuse me. That's the time we do that. That's also the cutoff for when we update the data. So right now, data comes in. We are trying to cut it off at 3:30 PM. That allows an initial investigation to be done. It allows us to complete the dashboards that are on the website and have our discussion. Anything that comes in after that, unless it's something extremely unusual, will fall into the following day's numbers. So at some point this afternoon, we will cut those numbers off again and continue with those briefings. Mayor, Council, any questions about the emergency management response? My next sequence will be to discuss how the city itself has adjusted.
Okay, let's start with Ms. Joy. She was wanting to make a comment a minute ago, so Latrell, why don't we start with you and then we'll. Others, if you have questions, if you'll just sort of raise your hand, I'll recognize you in order.
Okay, are these comments limited to what Mr. Atkinson has covered?
Please, and then I'll go through two other sequences here in just a moment.
Okay, that's, I thought you were limiting to what you have. Just one comment. I was driving past Whisperwood and they had delivered their boxes of PPEs and so forth and dropped them outside the facility. The employees were picking them up and taking them in, so I think that's part of what you referred to earlier about the delivery of those necessities. Other than that, I don't have any comment, except thanks to everybody for working so hard.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Ms. Patterson-Harris, was that, were you wanting to say something next? You're muted out if you want to say something. That's a, it looks like a heavy no to me. A little slow, Ms. Patterson-Harris, but I got it. Okay. All right, Mr. Atkinson, Mr. Chides, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Atkinson, on the compliance, I received a phone call yesterday about some concerns about the citizens that are traveling the public streets that are being stopped by the LPD. And I reassured them that LPD is not targeting. They just want to make sure that the citizenry are actually going to the stores and doing what the essential, the essentials are that we have talked about. Is there something that we can do to reassure the public that they're not being targeted? That LPD is just merely doing what they're supposed to be doing?
Absolutely. So let me, I'll speak to that. More than likely, this is related to a set of rumors that came out Sunday evening and really kind of built over into Monday that because Lubbock then had a stay-home order, that Lubbock police were stopping cars simply because they were on the street, and that is not correct. We are not stopping cars simply because they are on the street or simply to say, are you in violation of this particular order? So I want everybody to hear me plainly when I say that. We are not doing that. We will not do that. We did produce several interviews with the press, some social media that talked about we are not doing that, and we will be glad to reissue those. So we will re-release all of that, but I do wish to reassure everybody, we are not. If a car is being stopped on the street, it is not for the purpose of us saying, are you in violation of the stay-home order?
Thanks, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Other questions before Mr. Atkinson continues? Okay, Jared, please continue.
Thank you. Going to talk a bit about how the city has adjusted its operations as we've moved forward in this. First and foremost, all of your city core functions are operating. They will continue to operate. Your phone calls will be answered. Your emails will be responded to. We've actually had a bit of a welcome break this week. We've been able to field calls related to the grass is tall in the park. It is. We're catching up. We have every contractor plus our own teams out, but the grass is tall. We're trying to get ahead of that. I've had the pleasure of dealing with dumpster complaints and potholes and been able to resolve all those this week, and that is a welcome break. So again, your core functions continue to operate. We have, however, closed all our city facilities to the public. There's only very, very minimal exception to that. We have moved where appropriate to telework or to remote work. We have certain internal functions. Think of your internal audit department. They're not in the buildings. They are completely teleworked. We have a few that we do have to see people. These are generally seeing our own employees. Those operate on appointment-only basis. Where we can, every single other department, and this includes your city manager's office, those departments are teleworking at least at a minimum continuity of operations level or more than that. We have some operations that really work well to that, and in those cases, we've sent them home. If not, we've at least set apart a designated part of the team and sent them to work at home. And you'll see that through the majority of your structure. We have two landfills, as the council is aware. We have the one closest to town. It's sometimes called Colicchi Canyon, sometimes Landfill 69. We have closed it such that we are opening it only for a short period of time on Wednesdays and for a longer period of time on Saturdays. Our large landfill, the one to the west of Abernathy, it continues to run its normal hours. Report that I received, though, the residential side of your solid waste collection, tonnage has doubled over the last two weeks. It has doubled over the last two weeks. Some of that is certainly due to the fact that the grass is growing, no doubt. Hard to think some of it's not due to folks really are trying to stay home. A few other operational adjustments we've made, just as example, we have many departments that the workers historically would come into their office, receive their day's assignment, then disperse through city vehicles. They no longer do that. They actually report to their vehicles. And then they get a remote dispatch from that vehicle. We have places to where it makes more sense to provide additional take-home vehicles such that those employees do not come back to an office at all. Much of your shift worked. Think of items such as your public works department, whether that's our pipeline crews or our street crews, they continue to work. But all of their shift start and end times are now set up on 10 or 15-minute staggers so that the entirety of that crew does not show up or leave at the same time. Some of our real critical operations, so think of fleet, think of IT, your radio shop, those are basically locked down and we have restricted access protocols that allow people or machines, as it may be appropriate, to get in and out of those. One program that we are continuing and suggest that we will for quite some time is the provision of the senior meal program done through your adult activity center. Week and a half ago, those numbers in person had trended way down. When we began to pull tighter and tighter, ultimately ending up with our stay-home orders, the number of individuals needing to access that program actually accelerated. And we're back up to about 100 meals a day. We have put better protocols in place for our workers. We are only receiving and distributing meals that are single-serve. These used to be buffet type, but there's obviously a need in the community for that. Excuse me, and we are able to support it. So that continues. A few other items, we did hear a comment about city bus. So city bus traffic is down extremely. In fact, it's down about 70%. That is largely due to Texas Tech not being in right now. Thus, our part-time employees, and these are not city employees, they actually work for your contractor. But the part-time employers right now have been laid off. We did drop the fare box for our routes that are still running, and they are doing everything they can to maintain social distancing on the buses. We did hear the comment and we'll investigate that as well. I have a little bit of good news. Lubbock Animal Services, we have closed, of course, its lobby as well. So adoptions, fosters, reclaims, any of those, those are made by appointment only. And those are being made at curbside. They're being made outside the building. It's a less constrained environment. Two numbers. The March save rate was the highest ever. It was just a little over 98%. Significant increase in the number of cats that were able to be fostered or adopted. That's good in and of itself. It's good in another way, though. The census, the number of animals that are in that facility, the census is down to 125 animals. That is also a historic low. So historic high on the save, historic low on what's in there. So that's good. Libraries and museums, they are working from behind the curtain, so to speak, and right now that's getting those buildings in shape. That's catching up on those projects that couldn't be done when we had the public in. But it is also an effort to really start pushing out the virtual resources that we have available. So there are still offerings. You just can't get them from inside the building. Few other items. Few other items. Well, I think I probably covered that one. Any questions on operational before we go into financial?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question about city bus, if I could.
Yeah, Mr. Christian.
Are we, are we looking at reducing or consolidating any of the routes that we currently have? I know I've got a lot of background with, but that's basically what, what's, what's next? Are we planning ahead? Because it looks like we're going to be in this for quite a while. So I just want to know what city bus's plan is as far as, let's try to eliminate, eliminate route, not eliminate routes, but maybe consolidate routes. I'll mute and listen.
Okay, good, good question. Is city bus going to eliminate, consolidate, or other items on the routes? We cannot eliminate routes. Where we can, if the ridership is down enough, we're not doubling buses up, which are busy routes that happens early in the day, late in the day. A lot of our largest buses are parked. Those mainly support the tech system in that area in between university and Avenue Q. We'll continue to pare that down, although with the understanding, if we have people that need a ride, we're going to give them a ride. We're going to run the routes. We'll just do it to the minimum that we can.
One last question regarding city bus. I know that we have a service that can actually pick up or handicap or some of our older citizens. But what kind of numbers do you have in regards to those services that being requested by citizens?
That's, that is a good question. The question is on our, the smaller buses that we have that provide kind of a flexible transportation, mainly to get people to medical appointments. The demand for that has gone up dramatically. It has, and we are trying to adjust and keep protocols in place to protect all those patients and to protect our drivers as well. The, when you get our actual expense report, the amount of money being spent to clean and disinfect all of our equipment will have gone up dramatically.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Other questions for Mr. Atkinson about operational? Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I apologize. You may hear a few kids in the background. I'm on granny duty. I just had a quick question regarding any type of additional services that we're able to provide or assist citizens through community development.
Just a moment. Let me pull up another sheet of paper. Okay, as it relates to your community development department, every open rehabilitation job that has already started will continue and will be completed. We are trying to hold out on bidding the next set of those if we can. And that's simply because by definition, we and our contractors are inside somebody's home. So we'll continue doing anything that's open today. We will continue anything related to the emergency repair program. It's very essential. But we are going to try for the moment to hold on opening a new rehabilitation job. We also received word today, and I'm hesitant to go into much detail simply because I do not have it. We do expect some additional federal money that came out of the third stimulus bill. And I believe it's approximately 1.6 million and change that will be coming to Lubbock. We've been notified of the award, not the details. That will channel through your community to development department. And Ms. Murphy and her team are working right now to put it all together.
Other questions for Mr. Atkinson? Mr. Atkinson, does that conclude your remarks?
I've got a couple of quick slides that I'll go through, the dollars, the financial adjustments.
Please do. All right.
So we began about two and a half weeks ago revising every model that the city has that we use to handle our revenue, our expense, and our budgets. Let me share with you a couple of points. The transportation and the hospitality sector in Lubbock has been hit extremely hard and hit extremely quickly. Your entire retail economy has been hit. But in terms of what got hit upfront and got hit in a very, very hard fashion, it started with transportation and hospitality. Here are some examples. Outbound traffic at Lubbock-Preston Smith International Airport is now running at about 10% of prior year. I don't mean 10% off. I mean at 10%. It's 90% off. The most recent daily outbound count I have was close to business on April the 1st. 111 outbound. Outbound includes not only your passengers, but the crews it takes to fly those airplanes. 111. That's a 91% reduction for that day and time. This carries over into your hotel motel sector. Right now, our best occupancy estimates, this is as of last week, we estimate the occupancy in your local hotels and motels to be at approximately 28%. It's 28% of available rooms. Same period one year ago was at 78%. This also impacts your restaurants, your rental cars, and many others. We have a set of photographs that were taken at the airport this Monday. And the only cars in the parking lots are the rental cars that are in the storage lots, and they're full. Your actual passenger lot, your short-term and your cupboard are not. So that hit came in fast, and it came in hard. Let me talk about sales tax. Probably one of the biggest dollar questions I get. So remember first, sales tax receipts lag by a complete month. We will get a sales tax report next Wednesday, but that is actually the sales tax from February. We expect that to be good. And when you say good, good is we're about a million and a half above budget to this point in the year. We're having a tremendous year. We expect the hit to show beginning about mid-March, just almost exactly March the 15th. We do not get that report until the first Wednesday in May. So we can make our estimates, and we absolutely have. But just know that sales tax, it is moving out from under us quickly. We just don't have the exact number. Let me give you a model run. We're running models with a low, a mid, and a high. Using our midpoint model right now, we expect sales tax in Lubbock to be down a net $3 million by the time the fiscal year is over. That accounts for using up the million and a half that we're over at the moment. So another way to say that's four and a half million down. We'll give you another number. Texas Workforce Commission on March the 27th, last Friday, on that single day, the Workforce Commission fielded more claims for unemployment benefits than they had fielded in the entire month of February. One day more than the entire preceding month. So there is no question. We're going to have a huge economic hit here and in the state and nationally. Again, I'm going to say that's not all bad. So we are above budget at the moment with the sales tax that will reduce the deficit, but you will still have a sales tax deficit. We're seeing a few sectors of the economy that up to this point are very strong. So if we look at permit applications or plan submissions for drainage, for paving, water, wastewater, those are all up year-to-date. We're above last year. Our building permits, they're up year-to-date, and in fact, they're up significantly across several of the categories. For the month of March, we have closed it, and I have those numbers in hand. We're still up. I don't think they'll stay that way through April. Planning, applications for new plats, that's gross development. Zoning cases, that's generally existing property. Those are up year-to-date. We do expect them to slow, and that's accounted for in our models. But at the same time, what we hear from industry is that the projects that are permitted or that are permitted in the pipe, those projects are going to continue. It's going to be new stuff after that where we're going to see it. How are we going to, how are we going to handle this? How are we going to adjust to it? So first, this is only a partial list. There's much more to it. But I want to start with a very explicit statement. We are not changing or reducing our efforts regarding public safety, public health, or emergency management. That's what absolutely would be the wrong time to entertain any of that. So we are not. We implemented approximately two, two and a half weeks ago, a hiring freeze. That hiring freeze does not apply to public safety, public health, or emergency management. There is an option, if people need a critical staff member, that city manager or designee can approve it. So far, I feel that exactly one request for that. Your managers or directors are taking that very seriously. With the way that sits today, net of public safety, public health, and emergency management, we estimate that to be a $1.7 million savings on its own. Overtime, overtime that does not support the three we talked about above is being very, very strictly limited, and it will continue to be. All of our discretionary expenses, items such as office supplies and related, if you're not out, they're canceled. We're just, we're not going to spend those dollars. Obviously, travel was shut off quite some time ago. We are reviewing our uncommitted capital projects. When we look at those, we are already stopping those that we can stop if it is not going to cause us a greater expense in the future. So number one example is street maintenance. Right now, I do not think it's the move to cancel street maintenance. If our estimates get worse, we'll look at it, but I hope not. There are numerous other capital projects identified that will give us what we need in terms of savings to get through the end of the year. The biggest impact that I think we're going to see is on the, is on next year's budget. Best models we have to date show us bottoming out sometime around the end of September and then beginning what Mr. Kostlich describes as a U-shaped recovery. Now, what he means by that is it's not a recovery curve that's going to be shaped like a V. A V would go down quickly and up quickly. This one's going to come up on a more rounded and a slower style. Future capital, future vehicle purchases. I've already worked with both chiefs. Of course, the most, single most expensive vehicles we purchase are fire trucks. We had already purchased them for this year well before this hit us. We will resequence any of those purchases that are lined up for next year. I think any additional staffing or special projects for next year are certainly very, very much in question. I do not think that you'll have a complete shutdown of capital or special projects. I just think when we come back to you, council, at the end of July, the 1st of August, the discussion will not be quite as, quite as fun as it has been over the last couple of years. Mayor, that's the end of my presentation. I'd be glad to take questions.
Okay, I'll open the floor for questions for Mr. Atkinson on, on the financial piece or any, any parts of his presentation. Following that, then we'll have some discussion about the emergency order itself or disaster declaration itself. You know, just before, before going any further, I, you know, we're posted for executive sessions today. I don't, I'm having a hard time understanding why we would need that. We've been briefed on the emergency management piece. So we can talk about that at that, at a certain point. But I, I would think that this, the discussion or decision we're making today is one that we can talk about in public. And so just something that's come to me as I've, as I've thought about this. Open the floor for questions for Mr. Atkinson.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to make a little bit of a statement since I'm sitting in the waiting area of the airport in Houston, Texas. And I think I texted you Wednesday, the, the plane, when I came down here on Wednesday, the, the flight from Lubbock to Dallas, there was 10 people on the plane, 10. And it's not much better here as I'm looking around at some of the gates for people waiting to, to get on a plane to wherever. So I just wanted to echo Mr. Atkinson's concern about those, those boardings. Those are, those are for real. I anticipate those to be the same for quite some time. And, and I'm going to, going to have to bug out here in a minute as my plane, so I'm going to finally get to, get home, come home after treatment in, at MD Anderson. That, I just want to start this dialogue as it relates to the Jackson's letter. I've really been thinking a lot about our small, small businesses. And, and I know we can't do it immediately, but I, I would like to see it has, start having some discussions on how we might be able to, they're saying, level that playing field. And maybe we can get some of our smaller retailers at least having an opportunity to sell the same merchandise as being sold in some of the big box stores. Because the big boxes are winning, and our, and our small retailers are definitely losing. And since there isn't a, obviously, there isn't a vaccine for COVID-19. We're not going to have, this is, we're going to have to deal with this. This is going to be a new normal for us for some time. And I think as a community, that we're going to have to have that serious discussions of how do we bring some of these back into the fold? And once again, I'll just reiterate, we don't have, we don't have a cure for this. So we're going to have to stay with our CDC recommendations for some time. And we're going to have to, we're going to have to address that. We really are. Or we're going to lose everything that, we're going to lose lots and lots and lots of small, medium, and large, larger businesses, larger businesses for our community other than those box stores. This is not the time to drill deep and wide on that subject, but I do feel that's a necessity as, as city leaders for us to address that in short order. So that's, that's my comments right now.
Mr. Christian, before you go, first of all, say we wish you safe travels home from Houston. Before you go, what are your thoughts? You know, we've, the governor's order is in place through the 30th of April. It clearly defines, you know, we talked about it before. I don't like this essential versus not essential, but it clearly talks about that as do the, as does the federal government. What are you, what are you, what are you suggesting?
I'm, I'm suggesting we need to say, what, what is the plan after, after the end of this month, or at least have some internal discussions on what we can or can't do? Because, Mr. Mayor, I can't imagine that, that they're not having these same discussions in Austin, Texas, around the table of the governor. We cannot continue to, to go like this. And, and you know, once again, I've said it twice before, but we know we don't have the silver bullet to kill this virus. So how we're going about trying to defeat it right now is not going to change a whole lot, probably for the next 60 or 90 days or well, maybe into the, maybe into late summer or early fall. So I think those discussions on how we can, how we can, or what we need to do to open these, these small stores open, are we, we're going to have a, a, as it's been said so many times before, the, the cure, or trying to find the cure, is really killing us. But I think we're doing a better job. We've identified those, the nursing homes, some of those high, those high-risk areas. And I applaud the health department for what they've done so far. But we can, we can really concentrate on those high-risk areas and maybe work our way out from that. That's, that's our core problem, work our way out from that, from that center right now. Because I hope like heck that we can be in a position that we can welcome Texas Tech students back in August. But as of right now, that could be a very disastrous. And one last thing before I go. Mr. City Manager, I wish we could look and see what kind of more punitive actions we can take on those people that have broken the quarantine. Those few people are damaging the rest of the people that are doing it right, which in turn is damaging our local businesses. What, what, what is our options as far as putting them in their house and putting a, a, a law enforcement of some sort at their door? We've got to get, we've got to make sure that people know that we're not going to take, this is going to be very serious. If anybody breaks those sorts of perfumes and puts people in danger, which not only is it dangerous to the other people they come in contact, but it endangers our, our community and particularly our business community. So I'd like for us to look at that too, if you don't mind. Otherwise, just like to, I've already told my wife this, but got a good report. What I'm doing in, in, at MD Anderson seems to be working, but we're moving forward. And just appreciate all of our fellow council members and all of our staff that we can whip this and we can get back to at least some sort of normality if we all work together. And lucky me, I'll live in Lubbock. Y'all take care.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. I, I think two things. First of all, thanks for clarifying your point. I, I do think that we need to be spending a lot of our time talking about when we, how we restart business as, as soon as we can, as soon as it's safe. So thanks for clarifying. As it, as your, to your question specific to how we deal with people who don't follow quarantine orders, we, our public health calls on a daily basis, it's, it's been made very clear to our public health authority and to the health department that those that don't follow quarantine orders will be prosecuted to the extent the law will allow us to do so. Mr. Atkinson has committed resources from Lubbock Police Department to supplement the health department in those situations where we think we need to better understand whether someone- in those situations where we think we need to better understand whether someone is following the quarantine orders that had been issued. Mr. Atkinson, would you like to add anything to that?
Well, well stated, Mayor. I did mention that the four lockdown facilities were consuming nine of our police officers today. We're in an active investigation this morning that includes the Lubbock Police Department. And that's related to a potential individual. Maybe they did, maybe they did not violate their orders. But we will work that. As the mayor said, if it needs to be referred for further action, it will. If it requires us to put a police car at their individual location, we will do that.
Mr. Mayor, I just, I just want to clarify one other thing. I do believe that this is, when we get to that point where we can start working and helping our small businesses, it's definitely a stair step process. I'm not, I'm not at all for us opening up where mass people can move, but we can, we need to figure out a way to do this in a stair step manner, not unlike what some of the things that we have allowed the big box store, you know, having some sort of occupancy, uh, uh, you know, quality, amount on stores that can open. I truly believe if we look and talk to some of our, some of our local businesses that I, I, I think that they would be more than happy and they could probably even do a better job on policing some of the things that we are asking our big box stores do in regard to CDC rules. This is not just their livelihood, this is their lives. And I, and I think we need to look at that and take it very seriously of what can we do as soon as we can to stair step some of these from, from small to medium to larger businesses to get them back in business. Thank you very much and see you soon, guys. I'm going to sign off here in just a second.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Let's go to the mayor pro temp. Mayor pro temp, I'll open the floor for comments that you might have. Any, any questions you might have as well as comments. I'd like to work through the council and get your, 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 your questions and comments. Jeff, can you start?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate what Mr. Christian said as far as starting business back. And that is a sensitive topic. I don't, I need to think through that and I appreciated some of the comments that were given during the citizen comment period concerning that. Mr. Atkinson, I'd like to qualify. You said a hiring freeze has been in place for two weeks?
Yes, sir.
You also, I believe, mentioned that was 1.7 million in savings.
That, that is correct. And that, that contemplates that we will not freeze public safety, public health or emergency management.
Right. But that's in, that's in the current budget that gets us to the October 1 date.
Yes.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to qualify that. Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. I don't have another question or comment at this time. I do feel that the, to your point, Mayor, that we may not need, uh, the more I'm thinking through this, I don't know that there may need, may need that we need a executive session. And I think this is good that public's able to hear this discussion. And I appreciate the reports by Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. We'll come back to if you have other comments. Let's go to, let's go to, uh, let's see, we haven't heard from Mr. Massengill. Let's go to Mr. Massengill next. And we'll go to Ms. Joy after that.
Thank you, Mayor. I, um, you know, what's, what's on my mind is that I'm grateful for our city staff. I'm, uh, very grateful for our public health department. You know, it's a department that, um, we don't talk about often, but we talked about them a lot today and led by Ms. Wells, they're doing amazing work and and I'm grateful for that. You know, we don't know what we don't know about this virus. And what we do know is the farther apart we stay, that we can flatten the curve. And as much, I do agree with Mr. Christian and I, um, I own two small businesses here in Lubbock that have been very impacted by this crisis. And I look forward to reopening those businesses. But right now we are in the response phase of this crisis. And I anxiously await the recovery phase and look forward to that. But right now we need to stay focused on what we can do to flatten the curve and reduce the number of positive cases in our community.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. I want to just also thank you for your willingness to, to stay abreast of what's been going on. As the council knows, the city manager designated you a couple of weeks ago to fill that role. And, and I'm personally very much indebted to you for your willingness to divide and conquer it sometimes and even more so for your listening ear and, and I think wise counsel. Ms. Joy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To Mr. Massengill's comment about public health department. When I came on council in 2012, there was an effort by some to eliminate that department. I can only imagine what it would have been like today had we not brought it back and improved it and added Ms. Wells and her board. They are doing yeoman's duty for, for our city. When we met last, I talked about the grocery store experience that I had. And I will tell you that has significantly improved. And I've seen the grocery stores do things to try to protect everybody, including their employees. Mr. Christian brought up, and we'll just call them big boxes because that's the way we refer to them and they were named off specifically, I believe, by, uh, one of our citizen comment people. And that's what I have received and from my constituents who live in District Six are comments about what's going on. And I'll speak specifically about Walmart because those are the ones that I have received. It has turned into a place where families go to have a good time. They sell toys, they sell clothing. They sell outdoor items, something to fix your car with. They have it all. And that is to the detriment of our small businesses that we have deemed to be non-essential. And for those of us who do believe in business, whether it be big or small, we cannot justify what's going on currently. It is possible to allow them to operate, but it is possible to also isolate those areas and block them off that are selling items that Mr. Massengill could be selling in his store. There's, that's not hard to do. It can be done. And I think that that is a step that we need to work on now, not later. Because I agree, we have, at some point, we have to start phasing back in our small retail businesses. And Mr. Christian mentioned something, not specifically, but you can do that in a way that people could actually shop a small business if you could do it by appointment. And so the other problem that we're having at the Walmart that's in my district is, um, the kids. They come with family. They run all over the store. There's no control over them. And sometimes we'll have as many as six or eight from a family coming into the store. We can also take steps to, to stop that. It takes one person to shop for groceries. It doesn't take a whole family. And we can limit the number of people who enter that store at one time from a household. We've defined household. We know what it is. It's in our stay, stay in place order. And there's a lot we can do because then social distancing is not so difficult. It's very easy to do, but you can't do it with the numbers that we're seeing. I drove past it yesterday and the parking lot was full. We've got to do something and we need to do it sooner than later. And we need to do it sooner than April 30. Uh, our declarations, um, they're not necessarily tied to the governors. I've asked Mr. Weaver to be sure that we can do some of the things that I'm suggesting. Because I think, one, we will protect everybody from this virus. And number two, we can start down that, that road to incorporating our small, uh, retail businesses back into our society. I think it's necessary to start there. I agree, this virus, we don't have, we don't have a cure for it. But I think we're all a lot smarter now than we were before and we know how to control it. Those areas that are significant, such as the nursing homes. I think we've done a good job of implementing what needed to be done. And I trust that that will continue. So my suggestions in summary are that we look at those big box stores. We limit the non-essential sales and we start immediately on a plan to reincorporate some of these small, small businesses. We're killing the livelihood of some people. And maybe they'll change their career path. Maybe they will. But until such time as we have a, a better grasp on this virus, we've got to try to at least get back into some semblance that would not pick winners and losers. And right now we have picked the big boxes over the small retail. Thanks for what everybody's done. I know you've been busy.
So let me, first and foremost, I, I thank you, Ms. Joy, for your comments. I, I think we've already seen a beginning in our community around businesses taking the step that you just mentioned around limiting the number of fam, of, you know, people that come into a store together. And that's certainly something that, that we could take into consideration. You know, it's interesting that, um, I believe Costco probably has been the leader in our community. One of those big boxes from out of town, but they've been the leader in our community and really embracing the social distancing. And we were there last Saturday and they were well ahead. They, they were dead. They, where they were last Saturday is where other businesses are today. They've also limited, remember there's a membership type of entry, but as my understanding is, as, as of yesterday, they limited two people, two per membership. So to your point, I, I talked about it earlier this week on one of my videos. I, um, I saw a mom with three kids at the grocery store. And it just, we've got to think differently. We, it's a safety issue. It's, uh, what, while those kids is likely are very, certainly very capable of being a healthy carrier of this virus. And they're most likely going to not come down with it, but it could be another citizen, then most likely a vulnerable, member of a vulnerable part of our, our community that, that could come down with it. And I, I'll ask our legal team to look into your question around the blue law thing. I, I'm a little bit, I don't know how we're going to make it work. I, I have, I've already asked Mr. Atkinson and, and Mr. Weaver and his team to start looking at it. I'm pretty familiar with the federal CISA guidelines as, as have been issued by the Department of Homeland Security and the governor's order, which calls that out, as does our order. Even if we could limit what is sold in a essential business, who's going to enforce that? And so there's just a lot of questions I have and, and, but we can continue to work on that. This is new. The disnormous, whether it's a new normal or not, I don't know. I'm going to ask Mr. Atkinson, before we go to Mr. China, someone asked Mr. Atkinson to describe the effort that he, he and Brianna Girardi in, in, in conjunction with, uh, and she's our Director of Business Development. In conjunction with our city council staff, I think it's important to explain what they've been doing really since, um, since a week ago Tuesday around our, our, my order then about essential and non-essential businesses. Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Absolutely agree with the, the comments and the sentiment. This, no doubt it's rough. And I, I think some of those metrics I went over earlier. Each month are going to be a little more and a little more dire. So beginning a week ago Tuesday, as the mayor noted, we took Ms. Girardi out of her business development role and really set her up as a full-time liaison to work with comments, questions. Is this essential? Is it not? If I fall into the non-essential, what can I, can I not do? Of course, there's been so much activity on that. Pretty much the entirety of the council staff has stepped in to help support that. One thing I would remind the council of, and this, this is not the final answer by any means, but we're a bit unique here in Lubbock in our designation that for those retail establishments that do not fit that federal definition of essential. We are still allowing them to work, but to only work basically at curb side, not, not to allow people inside. Um, we are doing our level best as staff to, to be as accommodating as we can without letting something happen that clearly flies in, in the face of the logic that's in those orders. So a lot of the updated guidance you see on the web, that's the result of dozens, if not hundreds of phone calls, often on the same topic. So we've tried to work very closely and have been very pleased. Take construction, for instance, construction is open and per the, the guidance, that's really the entirety of the chain that goes to construction. I believe all, or maybe all but one of our larger general contractors have worked directly with us. We've asked them, how can you do this and do it safely? If they've had a good plan, we can look at it and say, we like that, do that. Just be sure you follow it. We've now been able to still, to distill that into a more common guidance that we can tell any of them. And it's, don't stop your work, don't put your people out, but you know, subcontractors need to be separated. No, no crews over X site, no gatherings on the site. They've been extremely accommodating. We did the same working with the car dealerships. A big part of what's going on in the car dealerships is identified as essential, but maybe not everything. So the local dealers got together, designated a person with whom we could work. Want to say it was Tuesday this week. It may have been Wednesday, but I, I think we kind of came to a, okay, I'm, I'm willing to write this to you if you're willing to follow it. And can't thank them enough. Our larger grocery store chain, um, not a day goes by that we don't talk. I had a call this morning on their ideas of the next steps they can take to help spread them out. We've got one big box store for sure that is limiting shoppers. I think grocery stores are interested in following suit, maybe not to one, but maybe to, to one or two. We do have some that I, I agree, we're not seeing them, we're not seeing them do that. So the, the declaration that the mayor is considering tonight, he mentioned really that one change, which was the occupancy limits. Council would remind you that the way that's written into your declaration, that, that's assigning a permissive authority that myself and public health can utilize to, to try to, to be targeted. That, that's assigning a permissive authority, um, that myself and public health can utilize to, to try to, to be targeted. Um, to try to be more discreet rather than just saying any and all fall in or fall out. Um, i- if that finds favor with the mayor and ultimately with the council, we will certainly do that as appropriate, so. It's tough and it's gonna get. It's at least gonna continue tough, if not get tougher, so we're well aware of it and we'll do what we can to help.
Mr. Chides.
Thank you, Mayor, just a couple of comments. To show my appreciation to Captain Wells. Public Health, all the staff, Mr. Atkinson. And all the staff that have helped out, first responders, LPD, LFR, emergency operation, they've done such a. Such a good job. Uh, we continue to ask the public, as you have, as we all continue to, to isolate themselves, don't be out in public if you don't have to. The sooner we reach that apex, the sooner we can possibly start getting some normalcy back into our lives. Uh. We, we, we don't want to be known or go down as picking winners and, and losers with small businesses. But unfortunately, if we can't curtail the traffic out there. We may not see a, 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 an end to this epidemic anytime soon. Again, please, uh, stay home, if you don't have to be out in public, stay at home. The life you save may be mine. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chides, we appreciate your comments. Other, other comments? Ms. Passion, here, she have anything else to add?
I just, I don't know, the statement or, uh, question. I continue to get, uh, contact, have contact made with some of the staff members of some of the businesses that are considered essential, specifically liquor stores. Are we doing anything or do we have any type of contact with some of those businesses that could potentially, um, have issues with safety measures? Uh, I know there are a lot of, uh, businesses that manufacture things, I know the. Again, I'll speak in reference to liquor stores because that's what I've been given, but I've been contacted regarding to ensure that we're helping them be safe. In those spaces, I don't know if we have the staff to do that, but I, I just have to pose that question because I continue to get it. Uh, have it be a concern. And additionally, I know Ms. Atkinson spoke about, uh, the capital projects, some of the larger capital projects. Being halted, I believe I heard that, uh, correctly. I am concerned with regards to, and I know it's not specific to the capital project, and ensure that we're continuing to. Uh, the unpaid roads to pay roads project that we have in place. And I think that's all I have in addition to, because as I continue to hopefully thank the, all of the staff of the city that continue to help this. This vehicle continue to move forward.
So, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like, I'll, uh, speak to those.
Yeah, please, please do.
So, we'll do the street one first. And, um. Probably should have been more explicit, we're not stopping the street maintenance program, nor the unpaved street program at this point. Um, the unpaved street program is a direct benefit to residences and I want to continue it. Street maintenance falls into that perfect category of it will cost us more later than it will today, so we're gonna keep both of those going. Um, if any, uh, any liquor store, any, any establishment. Um, if they have concerns or questions, um, they can contact me or Ms. Girardi and we'll work through them as it relates to safety. Um, would, uh, would remind any of the business people on the line today. We have issued under the Public Health Department's authority what we call the retail guidelines. Um, those are pretty specific, um. Setting up either the appropriate distance or the physical guards, so think about. Uh, at least one of the grocery chains has gone in and put shields in between their cashiers and their customers. Those same things apply at one of those liquor stores. So if, uh, we're aware of a way we can encourage compliance or help them, we'll do it. If they've got questions, we'll answer them. If not, they can go to that website, and we'll say it one more time, mylubbit.us/COVID19. That guidance is there and it's pretty simple and, and it's really based on the best practices that we observed other establishments doing. We've got businesses that are figuring this out, um, we add our public health expertise and try to help them do it.
Those guidelines also include cleaning of, of carts, cleaning of, of surfaces, that they're, they're pretty, they're pretty extensive and. I think if they're followed, they, um, they provide, uh, certainly for a more safe environment. Okay, um, are there other comments right now? We've, we've lost the mayor pro tem, and I thought I might take a, uh, just a. We might take a quick, uh, recess, uh, anyway, five-minute, uh, recess. Um, and then we'll come back and, and decide if we have anything else in work session left. Uh, and then make a de- decision about where we go next, so I've got, um. I've got three forty-three, we'll come back at three forty-eight. Thank you very much, we're, that's three forty-three Lubbock City Council is in, in recess.
Jeff, can. So I'm talking on the video now, can you hear me? Okay. Well, if you think you're good, I'll tell the mayor to, to crank back up. Jeff, are you still live? You can hear that? Yeah, I just. Yeah, he's back on. Matter of fact, I could see you.
Is everyone back on?
I, I think that, uh, they're slowly assembling, we've got at least three. Back on.
Okay, Ms. Nobles, can you hear me?
Yes.
Ms. Nobles, uh, i- if you can hear me, go ahead and, uh, uh, if you'd start our meeting again, please?
Hey.
Okay, are we broadcasting, Ms. Nobles?
Yes, we are.
Thank you very much, it's three fifty-one, and the Lubbock City Council is back in order. Okay, I'll open the floor to, uh, Mr. Griffith, we lost you for, for a minute there, um. Are there any other, anything else on your mind that you, you said you might reserve some comments until later, do you wanna? I think we've had, I think we've heard from pretty much everyone and except you in that regard, you, you, you ready to go? Mr. Griffith, would you make sure you're unmuted, please?
You got me now? Can you hear me now?
Yes, Jeff, you're live, go ahead.
I can.
All right, thank you, I apologize, y'all. I, I would only like to say I appreciate. The work of city management. I appreciate the work of, obviously, our health department. All of our first responders. Mayor, Council of Massengill, I appreciate what you guys have done. Uh, this has not been easy. And, um, bottom of my heart, I sincerely appreciate every, everybody and their concern about life and safety. Um, Ms. Joy, I agree that, um. There should be further discussion quickly on possible options concerning business. And reopening businesses if, if we can, by appointment, it's not a bad idea, if that's, if, I don't know if that's a thought, Mr. Weaver. Uh, that might be something that could be done.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Uh, Mr. Atkinson, why, why don't you, um, speak to. What we put in place from the very beginning. This would, this would go back to, uh. The, uh, our order about essential and non-essential. And, and we've worked very hard to try to. Protect or allow those businesses deemed as non-essential, I don't like the terminology, but we've tried to find a way to keep them. Um, i- in business to some extent, would you go into some detail on that, please, uh, please, sir?
You bet. Probably the simplest answer to that. Um, if you access our guidance document, of course, this is drawn from the, the current and the prior declarations. Um, we've gone in and, and defined, um, you know, per, per the state rules, what's an essential service. Essential services remain open, but they must enforce social distancing, we added to that our retail guidance document that's also enforceable. Uh, Lubbock has continued the language that was originally promulgated by the governor, uh, about restaurants, bars, food courts, uh. And so forth. We've also called out personal ser- personal services, businesses engaging in person-to-person services are closed, and this was the hair and nail salons. Uh, barber shops, tattoo piercing, et cetera, tho- those are written out. Other than that, we have an explicit statement, um, that a retail establishment. That doesn't fall into that excluded category nor into the federal list of the essential. They're close to their customers, however, the use of drive-through, pickup, delivery. And curbside options are allowed and are encouraged. Um, and we have fielded incredible number of calls trying to help folks work their way through that. And we're, we're at this time of year where people wanna get, uh, the graduating seniors and get, you know, get photographs made, and of course, it's spring and it's wedding season. We're finding ways that if those folks are willing to, to work with us and kind of, kind of come to an understanding about what is social distancing. Hygiene, et cetera, we're finding ways to let them work, it's, it's not the same as if their doors were open, no doubt. Um, but when I look around the state and I look at other declarations, um. Lubbock's been a little bit special in this regards, we're trying to find a way to let those that don't meet that federal definition do something. Uh, again, I know it's not the same, but it's, it's something, and we will continue to do that. Mayor, does that answer your question?
Yes, sir, that was, I think, a very good, um, a very good summary of that. Council, other, bef- before we. Ms. Joy, looks like you just took your, your mute off, you got some, do you have comments?
Uh, two, uh, one is a request. And I understand that these declarations sometimes have to be made in a hurry. If it's at all possible, before we have another declaration. Um, that we could have the work session preceding. The actual declaration, so the council as a whole could have some feedback. Uh, because of our limitations on being able to talk to each other and issues with walking. Because of our limitations on being able to talk to each other and issues with walking quorums, if, if it's possible, and I don't know that it always is, but if it is, is possible, I would like to see us at least have some input on the front end before the declaration goes out unless it is a matter of immediate emergency. And then the second one is just a comment. I was extremely proud of Texas Tech. If you read the paper this morning, the Department of Engineering is using their 3D expertise to actually design the masks that go over your head and down to the front. Dr. Sacco and those people out there, I think it's so encouraging what people are able to create in a time like this that they never would perhaps in other, in other time, but to do it in, in a timely manner. And I'm extremely proud of our university because they're operating at a, a real difficult situation with the kids online, but they, that was a real, I felt good that, that they were out there working to protect our community, so.
Thank you, your, your points well made about Texas Tech. They've led the way, although there are a number of our other businesses that have altered what they're doing to, to try to help with what's going on, but tech's been a great partner. And, you know, as have our school districts, I, it's hard to imagine that the change that they've gone through, that's the way it's impacted our educators and our kids and their families. That's something that I think is remarkable. In fact, I've started getting texts from parents who have school-aged kids at home wanting to know what would have to be done to increase the pay for their, their kid's teachers. And so maybe we'll come out of this with more appreciation for, for our educators, I hope so. To your question about, or your comment about having a work session before the emergency declaration, you know, that's, I guess it's certainly something we could do. I, I, the declaration that I put in place early this afternoon was based on the advice of the, of our legal team and they told me that we felt like it should have it in place prior to our meeting. That doesn't mean though, that, that we couldn't do that and I'll, 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 I'll work with Mr. Weaver and Mr. Atkinson on that. I, I would like to think that, you know, we're, we're sort of, we're out of the emergency, the emergency order, emergency declaration business. I have disaster declaration business. I would hope that we could settle in and, and stay at home and, and try to slow the spread of this virus and over the next few weeks and, and maybe start changing our discussions to how we start things up once we come out of this stay-at-home period. So other, other questions or comments? Okay, so council, I'll ask you now about your, we've talked about executive session. I know that, I know Mr., I know Mr. Griffith commented on, he didn't see a need for that. What, what are your, what are your thoughts around that? We'll start with you, Mr. Chidus, you're, you're next to me on the screen, so I'll go to you.
Thank you, I, I don't think it's necessary at this point, Mayor.
Okay, okay, good. Ms. Joy, let's go to you, you're next in line there. Ms. Joy, you're, you're muted, I believe.
An executive meeting and can, and I assume we can move on into our regular session.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Joy, Ms. Patterson Harris. Make sure you unmute yourself.
And be a part of the council meeting today. I, I'm good with going without the exception.
Thank you, your, your video is frozen. I'm sorry. Ms. Patterson Harris, your video is frozen. I, I, I believe you said that you were okay moving on to the regular council meeting.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Massengill.
Mayor, I, I don't see a need for an executive session. If I could just share a point of technology information here. You can, on my device, I can hold down the spacebar to temporarily unmute and when I lift my finger from the spacebar, it's back muted.
Once again, leading the way in technology, Steve Massengill. Okay, with that being the case, then, this, we will conclude our exec, excuse me, our, our work session and we'll move right into our regularly scheduled meeting. It's 4:03, I will call the Lubbock City Council to order. We are in, in a special meeting today. Today's the third day of April, 2020. We've already heard citizen comments. They were connected to our one item in work session and which will carry over to the, that same only item, the same, very same item that we have in executive session. I'm going to read this just because it's a little different, we're assembled in a little different way. So that item is, is an item 31, resolution from the city council. Consider a resolution continuing and affirming the mayor's declarations of a disaster regarding COVID-19 coronavirus epidemic. So we would need a, I'll open the floor for, for a motion around that resolution before we begin any further discussion. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve that resolution.
Second motion, so a motion from Mr. Massengill and a second from Mr. Chidus. Thank you, Steve and Juan. Okay, discussion on that motion.
Mayor, you're muted.
I tried the spacebar, it doesn't work.
It doesn't for me either, Ms. Joy, I've tried the very same thing. I thought, I thought, you know, that Mr. Massengill had found something. Okay, is there, I have to keep working on that, Steve. Maybe it's, it's, it could be user operated with Ms. Joy in me, so who knows?
Could be.
Okay, discussion on that motion, please. Okay, seeing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion to affirm the mayor's declaration of disaster?
Move to the mayor.
Ms. Patterson Harris.
I was just taking just a moment to review it again to be sure that I didn't have any further discussion, if you'd allow, just a few more minutes, if you don't mind.
Please. I just, I will mention while you're doing that, that there are three areas that are changed from the previous declaration. One is that it changes the date that our declaration expires to April 30th, consistent with the governor's order. There is a bit of wording changed under the health department's ability or, or, yes, abilities and it talked to, to allow us to control occupancy. Ms. Joy, I think this gets at some of your points that you made a while ago and I think would, it's, it, I think we've contemplated exactly what you talked about and so I think it's at that. And then finally, it just changes to, it, it updates as of today the confirmed cases we have and that related to the virus as well as the confirmed deaths we have related to the virus. Ms. Patterson Harris, do you have further comments or questions?
No, sir, I, I want to make sure that I did not have any further questions. I noted the change of the language, I didn't get that until not long before we commence this meeting. So I wanted to make sure that, that I didn't have any questions or concerns. Just want to make sure we're doing everything that we can to help folks be safe. Understand that folks who, there are going to be folks who are going to do these things whether they're asked to or instructed to do so or not. But there are folks that without this will continue to do things as usual. And unfortunately, that puts others at risk. It's a tough, it's a steady report, I'm sure that we do everything with our, our power to make sure that things are well.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson Harris. Other discussions? Okay, we've got a motion and a second on the floor to approve the decorations of disaster regarding the COVID-19 coronavirus epidemic. Council, please open up your, please open your microphones, please, and I'll ask for a, all of those in favor of the motion to please say aye.
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 Any opposed by that same sign? Okay, Ms. Garza, that carries six to zero. All right, council, that, that I believe is, is our business for today. Ms. Garza, do you have anything else for us?
No, sir, I don't, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Weaver?
No, sir.
So it is 4:10 and the Lubbock City Council is adjourned.